Good morning, I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors to order for April 25, 2006. Welcome to your boardroom. At this point, I'd ask Roberta to do the roll call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Michaels?
Supervisor Flynn?
And Supervisor Parks.
Thank you, and I know Supervisor Flynn and Supervisor Michaels won't be coming today, and they're off doing other things, and wish them well at that. And at this time, I'd like to call up Rabbi Ted Ryder from Thousand Oaks with Temple Adat Elohim, and welcome. Thank you so much for coming from Thousand Oaks to join us for our moment of affirmation.
Well, thank you Supervisor Parks for inviting me this morning. As I prepare my thoughts this morning, I thought first of Yom HaShoah, which is Holocaust Memorial Day, and today is Yom HaShoah, which is commemorated by Jews around the world. And here I am, in beautiful Ventura County, speaking at the County Board of Supervisors meeting soon. I'm going to walk next door and serve my jury duty today. I am worlds away from the Holocaust. I am generations from my grandparents who fled Nazi Europe, who had no invitation to speak to the County Board of Supervisors, had no civic responsibility for jury duty, in fact, had no possibility for jury duty. So I beam with honor as I stand before you this morning, worlds away and generations away from the chimneys of Europe. Yet today, I watch as the memorial candle burns, and I feel so close as well. I am still deafened by the silence that follows the screams. I am still suffocated by the smoke that follows the fires. We're as a world community so far away from the Holocaust, yet we are still so close. I pray for the day when genocide will be an ancient word, when pain and suffering will be a memory, when we treat every person like a human being, carrying a unique spark of the divine. Sim shalom, tova u'vacha, chaim v'chaser v'racha mimi, alenu v'alko ameha. Grant us peace, your most precious gift, a eternal source of peace, and give us the world to proclaim its message to all the peoples of the earth. Bless our country, that may always be a stronghold of peace and its advocate among the nations. May contentment reign within its borders, health and happiness within its homes, strengthen the bond of friendship among the inhabitants of all lands, and may the love of your name hallow every home and every heart. Blessed is the eternal, the source of peace. Amen.
Thank you very much Rabbi.
Thank you very much.
Will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that we, oh, excuse me, this is for the minutes. We have a motion and a second from Supervisor Bennett. No objection, that does pass. We now move on to our agenda review with Mr. Johnston.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are only two minor adjustments to the agenda. Item 31, the attachment sample letter should be on watershed protection district letterhead instead of the general public works. And on item 33, there's a revised board letter on attachments pages five and nine.
Thank you. A motion to accept the agenda as changed, motion and a second from Mr. Bennett, and with that, it passes unanimously. And now we'll go on to our consent agenda items. We did have a request from Supervisor Flynn to pull item 22. He'd like to speak to it if it's going to be on it, so I would request that we honor his wishes and look at items 10 through 21.
We need, I would be-
Your microphone, please.
I'd be ready to move on all of the consent calendar, but we would need three votes for that to happen, and so if you're-
Yeah, I'm not going to support that because he would like to have a word on it.
Sure. So then, yeah, so I would move the consent calendar items, 10 through 21.
So items 10 through 21 are moved, and seeing no objection, those are approved, and 22, I guess we'll put on to our next agenda and move on to our public comments. Right now, do we have any cards? No cards? Our first speaker, our first speaker is Sheriff Bob Brooks, and Sheriff Brooks has some recognitions to give today, and maybe I can come down and assist you on this.
I would like that. I just want to set a little bit of the stage, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnston. Appreciate having the opportunity to do this. A little bit of the background, most of which you're probably aware of, but our sheriff's communication center over the past 20 years, it's some master architect built it under the jail with all the jail plumbing above the dispatch center, so anytime an inmate decides to try to flush a sheet, a pillow, another inmate, anything like that, we have major problems down there. And that led to mold, and we've dealt with those things over the years, but on March 16th, we had a complete breakdown where the sewage overflowed, it was coming down from the ceiling, it was coming along the floor. Dispatch personnel were putting plastic over their heads or coats over their heads, trying to protect their monitors from the fallout, trying to use brooms to keep the tide at bay in the hallway. It was a mess. They deserve a tremendous amount of gratitude on our part because they didn't want to leave the public without communication to local law enforcement and other emergency services, and they stayed under those conditions until we could arrange to bring a backup facility up in East Valley. Really heroic work on their part, and they're just terrific people. But as that, as that occurred, and we were dealing with the aftermath, we also learned that with any amount of earth movement, the problems that the communication center has had in the past would, it would, it would cause the system to completely break down, and we'd be unable to operate in the case of a major earthquake, those kinds of things. So we not only had to move out, but we had to move out with the knowledge that we were never going to go back in, at least for that purpose. And that led us to the dilemma. Thankfully, Janita Cromback, our communications manager, had the foresight to bring up a backup facility in East Valley. It's only temporary, it's far too small, we didn't have 9/11 service to that site, so I meant the public, if they, if they could not identify the source of a call, we wouldn't know where they were and couldn't get to them. So it really was a life-saving issue in terms of getting back into full service as quickly as we could. So we were faced with, with a dilemma that there was nowhere to go. We had long-term plans for another build-out for a communication center, but those plans have been around for years, and you know, there is nothing short-term on the horizon for that. So our, our management team very quickly got together and started looking, and within a day, a site was located. The problem with the site was that it belonged to GSA, and GSA had already made arrangements to move the special projects unit in there, already bought the furniture, we have no claims to that at all. So there are all kinds of things to work through, but there's criticism of government for being bureaucratic and slow and inefficient compared to private industry, and this was really a remarkable, almost miraculous, team effort to, to bring us back into a very usable situation in a short period of time. And I just want to recognize some of the reasons that that worked. First of all, the CEO's office, they recognized the severity of the problem and quickly made funding available for a temporary move, without which nothing could have happened, obviously, and I thank the board for their support on that. GSA took a lead role because without a temporary location today, we'd still be trying to figure out where to put trailers in a parking lot somewhere and run wires to them. There really wasn't a good backup plan. And their effort took a great deal of sacrifice, not only in making the project work, but denying themselves a place to move that unit, which they had very legitimate needs for. Their response was, you need it more than we do at this time, so we'll just make it work for you, and we're so grateful, it's very difficult for us to express it. So within a day, we found a place to move. Construction began within a week. We're talking about permits, inspections, all of those things that backlog projects is, as we called around and looked at other dispatch centers that had to relocate in case of an emergency. We were talking three months, six months, nine months, you know, nine months in some cases without 9/11 service, if you're looking at the public being denied, you know, a vital resource, and we started in a week. And three weeks later, they were done with the project. So 32 days after we lost the use of that center, we were back in a, in a center that not only it's temporary, but it's a very adequate, pleasant working environment for our dispatch staff that certainly deserves that. And it just happened with a tremendous level of teamwork by the county team. Now, public safety is, you know, often talked of in terms of fire and law, but public safety was RMA and ISD and GSA and everybody that got involved in this project, the CEO's office-
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Flynn. And Supervisor Parks.
Thank you, and I know Supervisor Flynn and Supervisor Michaels won't be coming today, and they're off doing other things, and wish them well at that. And at this time, I'd like to call up Rabbi Ted Ryder from Thousand Oaks with Temple Adat Elohim, and welcome. Thank you so much for coming from Thousand Oaks to join us for our moment of affirmation.
Well, thank you Supervisor Parks for inviting me this morning. As I prepared my thoughts this morning, I thought first of Yom HaShoah, which is Holocaust Memorial Day, and today is Yom HaShoah, which is commemorated by Jews around the world. And here I am, in beautiful Ventura County, speaking at the County Board of Supervisors meeting soon. I'm going to walk next door and serve my jury duty today. I am worlds away from the Holocaust. I am generations from my grandparents who fled Nazi Europe, who had no invitation to speak to the County Board of Supervisors, had no civic responsibility for jury duty, in fact, had no possibility for jury duty. So I beam with honor as I stand before you this morning, worlds away and generations away from the chimneys of Europe. Yet today I watch as the memorial candle burns, and I feel so close as well. I am still deafened by the silence that follows the screams. I am still suffocated by the smoke that follows the fires. We as a world community are so far away from the Holocaust, yet we are still so close. I pray for the day when genocide will be an ancient word, when pain and suffering will be a memory, when we treat every person like a human being, carrying a unique spark of the divine. Sim shalom, tova u'v'acha, chaim ve'chaser ve'raachamim, alenu ve'alko ameha. Grant us peace, your most precious gift, oh eternal source of peace, and give us the world to proclaim its message to all the peoples of the earth. Bless our country, that may always be a stronghold of peace and its advocate among the nations. May contentment reign within its borders, health and happiness within its homes, strengthen the bond of friendship among the inhabitants of all lands, and may the love of your name hallow every home and every heart. Blessed is the eternal, the source of peace. Amen.
Thank you very much, Rabbi.
Thank you very much.
Will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that we, oh, excuse me, this is for the minutes. We have a motion, and a second from Supervisor Bennett. No objection, that does pass. We now move on to our agenda review with Mr. Johnston.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are only two minor adjustments to the agenda. Item 31, the attachment sample letter should be on watershed protection district letterhead instead of the general public works. And on item 33, there's a revised board letter on attachments pages five and nine.
Thank you. Motion to accept the agenda as changed. Motion and a second from Mr. Bennett, and with that, it passes unanimously. And now we'll go on to our consent agenda items. We did have a request from Supervisor Flynn to pull item 22. He'd like to speak to it if it's going to be on it, so I would request that we honor his wishes and look at items 10 through 21.
We need, I'd be-
Your microphone, please.
I'd be ready to move on all of the consent calendar, but we would need three votes for that to happen, and so if you're-
Yeah, I'm not going to support that because he would like to have a word on it.
So then, yeah, so I would move the consent calendar items, 10 through 21.
So items 10 through 21 are moved, and seeing no objection, those are approved. And 22, I guess we'll put on to our next agenda and move on to our public comments. Right now, do we have any cards? No cards? Our first speaker, our first speaker is Sheriff Bob Brooks. And Sheriff Brooks has some recognitions to give today, and maybe I can come down and assist you on this.
I would like that. I just want to set a little bit of the stage, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnston. Appreciate having the opportunity to do this. A little bit of the background, most of which you're probably aware of, but our sheriff's communication center over the past 20 years, it's some master architect built it under the jail, with all the jail plumbing above the dispatch center. So anytime an inmate decides to try to flush a sheet, a pillow, another inmate, anything like that, we have major problems down there. And that led to mold, and we've dealt with those things over the years. But on March 16th, we had a complete breakdown where the sewage overflowed, it was coming down from the ceiling, it was coming along the floor. Dispatch personnel were putting plastic over their heads or coats over their heads, trying to protect their monitors from the fallout, trying to use brooms to keep the tide at bay in the hallway. It was a mess. They deserve a tremendous amount of gratitude on our part because they didn't want to leave the public without communication to local law enforcement and other emergency services, and they stayed under those conditions until we could arrange to bring a backup facility up in East Valley. Really heroic work on their part, and they're just terrific people. But as that occurred, and we were dealing with the aftermath, we also learned that with any amount of earth movement, the problems that the communication center has had in the past would, it would cause the system to completely break down, and we'd be unable to operate in the case of a major earthquake, those kinds of things. So we not only had to move out, but we had to move out with the knowledge that we were never going to go back in, at least for that purpose. And that led us to the dilemma. Thankfully, Danita Crombeck, our communications manager, had the foresight to bring up a backup facility in East Valley. It's only temporary, it's far too small, we didn't have 9/11 service to that site, so it meant the public, if they could not identify the source of a call, we wouldn't know where they were and couldn't get to them. So it really was a life-saving issue in terms of getting back into full service as quickly as we could. So we were faced with a dilemma that there was nowhere to go. We had long-term plans for another build-out for a communication center, but those plans have been around for years, and you know, there is nothing short-term on the horizon for that. So our management team very quickly got together and started looking, and within a day, a site was located. The problem with the site was that it belonged to GSA, and GSA had already made arrangements to move the special projects unit in there, already bought the furniture. We have no claims to that at all. So there are all kinds of things to work through, but there's criticism of government for being bureaucratic and slow and inefficient compared to private industry, and this was really a remarkable, almost miraculous, team effort to bring us back into a very usable situation in a short period of time. And I just want to recognize some of the reasons of that work. First of all, the CEO's office, they recognized the severity of the problem and quickly made funding available for a temporary move, without which nothing could have happened, obviously, and I thank the board for their support on that. GSA took a lead role because without a temporary location today, we'd still be trying to figure out where to put trailers in a parking lot somewhere and run wires to them. There really wasn't a good backup plan. And their effort took a great deal of sacrifice, not only in making the project work, but denying themselves a place to move that unit, which they had very legitimate needs for. Their response was, you need it more than we do at this time, so we'll just make it work for you, and we're so grateful, it's very difficult for us to express it. So within a day, we found a place to move. Construction began within a week. We're talking about permits, inspections, all of those things that backlog projects is, as we called around and looked at other dispatch centers that had to relocate in case of an emergency. We were talking three months, six months, nine months. You know, nine months in some cases without 9/11 service, if you're looking at the public being denied, you know, a vital resource. And we started in a week, and three weeks later, they were done with the project. So 32 days after we lost the use of that center, we were back in a center that not only it's temporary, but it's a very adequate, pleasant working environment for our dispatch staff that certainly deserves that. And it just happened with a tremendous level of teamwork by the county team. Now, public safety is, you know, often talked of in terms of fire and law, but public safety was RMA and ISD and GSA and everybody that got involved in this project, the CEO's office and the board, because it directly related to our ability to respond and save lives of Ventura County residents. So from our point of view, and we're going to do some internal recognitions, but our management team of Commander Mark Ball, Danita Crombeck, Karen Portlock, the dispatch supervisors who are also here today representing the dispatchers and the dispatchers themselves, did really heroic work, but they couldn't have done it alone, and we want to recognize those other county agencies that worked with us. And now would be an appropriate time Supervisor Parks to join me, but I do want to recognize, although we're recognizing agencies in total, we want to recognize some individuals who stayed with this project from the very beginning, all the way through to completion. And I walked through when work was being done, and you know, nobody was complaining. People were actually energized about the partnership and the fact that they'd taken on an impossible task and they were going to get it done. They're all proud of the work that they've done, and we're very proud of them. But I won't read every one of these, but Steve, Morgan, if you have you come down, I'll read yours, and then I'll just talk about what's different on the other recognitions. But Steve Morgan, Chief Deputy Director of Ventura County GSA, your commitment to the sheriff's communication center relocation project at the expense of your own project in the same building has led to a successful opening of a much safer working environment. Your sacrifice and leadership was above and beyond the call, and has helped make our county a safer place to live. On behalf of the men and women of Ventura County Sheriff's Department, thank you for your leadership and clear purpose, which ensures that our citizens and employees have a much safer community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben.
This is a real team effort. The staff pulled together. It's fun to watch a group pull together as a team and make a difference on behalf of the citizens.
Thank you. Glenn here. You know, Glenn has been with us on the Todd Road Jail project, and you know, he's got a long history of working with us, and especially at this project, but it's true with Glenn, the entire time we've worked together, it's never been like he's working on a sheriff's project, he's working on our project. And we've always felt that he's been part of our team, and really appreciate everything you've done, Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Williams from RMA did a lot of the design work on the electrical, and we ran hundreds of miles of cable from this facility to that offsite facility, had to figure out how to do it, how to make it work, how to link it with 911 service. It was an incredibly complicated project, and without the good design work and probably looking the other way on some permits or something, it was incredible and exceeded our expectations in every regard. And from ISD, we have Mike Pettit and Mike Whitcomb, and Scott Allison, who can't be here today, working on the telecom side of the operation, really did a fabulous job for us. They were there whenever I stopped by, working in closets and splicing wires or whatever they do, but not only did we have our consoles up and operating, but they found a way to link our GPS screens and actually enhance the system that we had before in that amount of time, so really appreciate it.
Well, this was a very unfortunate circumstance that we had happen here. It has at least let us realize if we are in a case of an emergency or disaster, you have an earthquake or something, that wasn't a particularly good location.
Yeah.
And so if anything else, we looked at a way of how to find another one and be able to get it up and going quickly. So it was, in that sense, a good experience because we'll be able to learn from that in case there is a disaster.
Absolutely true.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Sheriff, if I could, two things. One is just a comment, the other is a question. And my comment is, you know, a lot of times we talk about priorities of county government and all of that stuff, and we've said, you know, public safety is a priority, and we have other priorities, and yet at the same time, I think this project really demonstrates that public safety truly has a preeminent position when it comes to, you know, life and death issues and 911, and you know, literally, GSA put themselves in a second tier, and I just want to commend everybody from the CEO on down for balancing that priority, and I think accurately reflecting what the board has thought about priorities in terms of public safety. My other question is, I just heard this once, and I kind of heard it as a rumor, and I'm just trying to find out, it occurred to me how to ask, was there a concerted effort by inmates that caused that problem?
I don't believe that there was. Now that they've read in the paper where the water actually flows, they probably would have more of an inclination to do that, but that's a common practice. Some of them are just malicious. They may not have liked lunch, they may just be mad at the system, you know, shoving things and breaking down systems, they enjoy us having to respond to it and fix it, so I don't think it was any concerted effort, it was a single event by one inmate.
Oh, was that one inmate, and then it caused everything else to back up?
Yes.
Great, okay, hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Mr. Johnston, want to comment?
I might add a couple of comments. One, this project, from the standpoint of public safety, the communications is the nerve center of what takes place, and so without it, you know, we're all in jeopardy. It was really great to see the cooperation. I know that in the five years, we've all worked and fought together, both with each other and with others. There's people who didn't know whether we could ever cooperate. The cooperation has never been better. I want to recognize Paul Grossgold, our new director of GSA, who has not only served his country, but is now providing leadership in GSA for us. One of the things that may not be known is that the captain, in this case Captain Steve Morgan, the pirate, he's brand new, or fairly new. He comes from a fairly extensive background in Los Angeles, working with sheriff's office, and he happens to be one of our local residents, so it was a great recruiting effort to allow him to work close to home and for him to have that kind of experience and rapport with the sheriff's office. And then, most importantly, Glenn, who is the veteran, not only having served his country earlier, but many years here with Ventura County, and he provided the leadership on the ground to get this thing done. Good coordination from ISD. You're seeing a lot of young faces, they are the future. This is part of the succession planning effort. You guys are going to have to keep running this place. It's great to see you do it so well and so quickly. So thanks to everybody.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And also to send my thanks, I spoke directly with Anita Crombeck, who was recently honored at a local community event, and her passion for her dispatchers and her, not her defense, but her pride in her dispatchers and how they responded to this incident was just incredible. And she clearly is passionate about getting them up and working and doing the job that they're so committed to doing, but doing it in an environment that should be, and now is, a safe environment and a clean environment, and supported by the county family. So she really carried a good message. Thanks for the good word.
Yes, and then yesterday also, we recognized the dispatchers themselves at Crime Victims' Rights Week, so that was nice to be able to do that, too. Thank you for that. And now we'll go on to our regular rest of our public comment period, and we have our two public commenters. Mr. Egbert, would you like to go first, followed by Mr. Williams?
Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and the board of supervisors. I'm going to continue to read into the county record for preservation, the document two separate lawful citizens in America, U.S. citizen and state citizen. The governments of the United States and each of the states of the several states are distinct from one another. The rights of the citizen under one may be quite different from those which he has under the other. Colgate versus Harvey. The federal government, again acknowledging the two separate citizens in America. Rights of national citizenship as distinct from fundamental or natural rights inherited in state citizenship. Madden versus Kentucky. More proof the federal government proclaiming that two separate citizens exist in America. The privileges and immunities of citizens of the United States which are protected by the Fourteenth Amendment against abridgment by the states are those which rise out of the essential nature and characteristics of the national government. The federal constitution treaties or acts of Congress as distinguished from those belonging to the citizens of a state. Gardner versus Ray, Hammer versus State. Again, more and more proof the United States government acknowledgement of proof positive that two separate citizens exist in America. The privileges and immunities clause of the Fourteenth Amendment protects very few rights because it neither incorporates any of the Bill of Rights nor protects all rights of individual citizens. See Slaughterhouse cases. Instead, these provisions protect only those rights particular to being a citizen of the federal government. It does not protect those rights which relate to state citizenship. Jones versus Tamer. The aforementioned case law provides only embarrassment to any entity of the government which proclaims there is only in existence one citizen in America. The facts clearly show two citizens, separate citizens, one, a U.S. citizen, and two, a state citizen, and for those two separate citizens, their rights and protections under constitutions and color of the law are vastly different. Is a citizenship of the United States a privilege or a substantial property right? Status of citizenship of the United States is privilege, and Congress is free to attach any preconditions to its attainment that it deems fit and proper. Enray Fanner, Boyd versus Nebraska, applications of Bernard Scotty, Morelli, Enray DiMio. These four-mentioned case laws pertain only to U.S. citizens. Is a state citizenship a privilege or a substantial property right? State citizenship is a vested substantial property right, and the state has no power to devise or impair these rights. Fairlot versus Kingsbury. The four-mentioned case law pertains only to state citizens. The party claiming to be a U.S. citizen is A, a citizen of a corporation, or B, a citizen of a country. A citizen of the United States is a citizen of the federal government. Kitchens versus Steele. In the four-mentioned case law, the United States government prosecutes that a U.S. citizen is a citizen of the country under the Fourteenth Amendment. This cannot be a state citizen. The United States of America is a corporation endowed with the capacity to sue and be sued to convey and receive property. One Marsh, one seventy-seven, one eighty-one. But it is proper to observe that no suit can be brought against the United States without the authority of law. Hoover's Law Dictionary, fifth definition of the United States, paragraph fifteen. United States means, A, a federal corporation. United States Code Title 28, Judicial and Judiciary Procedure Section 3002 defines, paragraph fifteen A, on page 564, in clause four, the words "United States" are substituted for the words "federal government." Ten U.S.C. CS history. What is meant here in the four-mentioned-
Your time is up, Mr. Egbert. Thank you very much.
All right.
Could you continue that next time?
I will continue the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carol Dean Williams, you're next.
Good morning. I request and demand equal time. That was the longest five minutes of public comment I ever-
He went four seconds over.
I ever witnessed, so I see now that you can fool with the clock. Well, anyway, Carol Dean Williams, sixty-year resident. I have Mr. Bennett's California Form 416, and he's in serious violation of the ordinance on 11204 and 118204. I just verified this with the Elections Division, and I've been dissecting your ordinance. And I bet Steve Bennett can't even tell me what the ordinance does. And he has put his micromanagement into this ordinance, but he has once again deceived the citizens of Ventura County, and especially those that vote for him. Section 1271, and we have that. Mr. Foy is a non-participating ordinance. So once he stands seventy-five percent, all expenditures goes out the window. It's a free-for-all. Come on, Mr. Bennett! A Brown University graduate couldn't understand this? Come on, give me a break! And by the way, Mr. Bennett, as of 1231205, has $66,029 in his account. Now, a candidate that can start raising money January 1st, 2007, has zero in his account. Is that fundamentally fair? Is this the smoke in chimneys of the United States that the rabbi spoke about? Is this the way we incinerate the voters in this country? We don't need physical chimneys and physical smoke, we just pass ordinances. Well, I'm giving Mr. Bennett, that's what the ordinance should have been written on. Again, I present him the toilet award. The sheriff knows about toilets. Well, I wanted Supervisor Michaels to be here, but I can't help it if she's not. I have her scheduled. On February 16th, at 8:30 a.m., she was in a Sami sunrise rotary meeting. At 10 a.m., she was in Tucson, Arizona, 534 miles away. She couldn't drove, she couldn't afford jet plane because you've got to be at the airport an hour before. How did Supervisor Michaels get to Tucson, Arizona?
Mr. Williams, you have a microphone, you don't need to yell.
You hear me too. And she gets back, February 21st, she's in a board meeting at 9 a.m., and she's back from Tucson, in Arizona, less than an hour. Well, I'll have to, hopefully the road will get to her. You know, I just predict things all the time, you know? Strip-searching, strip-searching women in the county jail, and now the federal court has upheld that, and all the time I was reading about Lisa, and her being strip-searched, and they're saying that this has drawn $20 million against the county, and the county still continued it? The county still continued it? Oh, mercy! Leave those cavities alone, or go to the dentist and get them filled!
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
How much time does that leave in my life?
You have forty-two seconds.
Forty-two?
Forty-two. Thank you. All right, our next item on the board agenda is our board comments. Supervisor Long, would you like to go first?
Sure. And good morning. First thing I'd like to do is talk about an individual we lost in our community and in my district recently, and there was a service held for him, and that's for Henry Hank Correel. And Hank was an incredible man, lifelong resident of Fillmore and Piru, retired from the sheriff's department in 1989 after 35 years of service. He was instrumental in the development of Ventura County Sheriff's Academy. He was responsible for obtaining the first helicopter from the U.S. government for the sheriff's department. It says here after retiring, but I know long before retiring. Hank has always been so involved in Fillmore and his entire family. Hank has always been so involved in Fillmore, and his entire family has. They all have a hands-on involvement with the community. And Hank really did become known as the voice of Fillmore because he announced absolutely every parade that was ever held in town for, well, I've been around since for ten years, and prior to that, when Maggie would attend the parades and I would drive her at that time, Hank was announcing the parades. So he's been doing it for at least twenty years. He announced every Fillmore High School football game in town for the past fifteen years. He was a master of ceremonies at the Mist-Fillmore Pageant for the last nineteen years. He was a member of the Lions Club and the Veterans of Foreign War, and just a tremendous, tremendous man. He would, if he disagreed with you, he would always do it kindly and with a smile, but he would certainly tell you what his opinion was. Just a genuine, genuine, nice man and wonderful family. He will certainly be missed by his wife of fifty years, Mary Lou, his son Richard, and his daughter Lori, grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And the community really will miss him. The other thing I'd like to comment on, received our Human Services Horizons April Edition report from our director Ted Myers, and I really enjoy reading these because it gives us a snapshot of the success that's going on with the Human Services Agency, the good work they've undertaken. Of course, this one focused on Cal-Win. But in that, it also had a little corner that talked about our RAIN project and the Transitional Living Program. And they run a wish list for the RAIN project. So I would just encourage the county family who get a chance to receive this and read this to take a look at that wish list. We need to continue to support our RAIN project as we now move ahead in the aggressive plan to end homelessness in the next ten years. This will be a significant piece to continue to support. So just to ask you to take a look at it. Some simple things like crib sheets for baby's beds and forks and liquid laundry, so things like that. And then last, I'd like to mention, it was wonderful to have the rabbi speaking today on Yom HaShoah. I had the pleasure of attending last night the showing of a movie called Paper Clips, and it's a movie that has been out for a couple of years. It's a documentary about lessons of tolerance and diversity that took place in a rural town of Tennessee called Whitwell. An incredible lesson, started out as a teaching lesson by the middle school teachers and the principal to get the children involved in a project that would talk about tolerance and diversity. And this is a community that is basically ninety-nine percent Baptist, Christian, very little diversity. And the students who captured the stories of the Holocaust and their learnings decided to take on a project to collect a paper clip for every life lost in the Holocaust. And they started out to collect these six million paper clips, and the story goes from there to an incredible result and memorial that they have now established in the little town of Whitwell, Tennessee. Just a very compelling movie. It's showing at most of the temples, and I know that the Jewish Federation and the Teaching Tolerance Program will continue to see how they can get this wonderful movie out to our middle schools where they do a strong program in teaching tolerance and paying for, now they've paid for over thirty-five thousand middle school students to visit the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles. This is another wonderful lesson that they'll have to share with whoever is willing to take a look at it. So if you get a chance to look at it, truly was a wonderful, wonderful story during this time of Yom HaShoah. I wanted to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. Something definitely to catch. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I would also like to point out that the Business Work Life Alliance of Ventura County has selected the county of Ventura as receiving one of its distinction awards for 2006 Ventura County Family Friend, as a Ventura County Family Friendly Employer. And I'm trying to find out whether anybody is planning on attending the event on Wednesday, May 10th, representing the county. And I would ask the CEO if he could let us know if somebody would be representing the county at that event. It's at 9:30 at Spanish Hills Country Club. Looking at my calendar, I'm a little tight, so, yeah, okay. Okay, great. And then I appreciate Supervisor Long's comments. This is an appropriate time for us to be talking about tolerance, and I just wanted to pass on an observation that here in the United States, it is a constant challenge that we have dealing with the issue of tolerance and diversity, and yet here in the United States is probably one of the remarkable experiments taking place in the world in terms of tolerance and diversity. And so we have continued challenges, but we have probably one of the finest opportunities anywhere in the world to try to make this thing work. If you wanted to think about something valuable to commit your life to, it certainly is that. So I look forward to trying to see a paper clip, I think. That sounds like a great, great thing to happen. And if in the middle of the country, in Tennessee, in a small town with ninety-nine percent, you know, Southern Baptist can tackle this project, everybody in this country can tackle the project. So thank you.
Thank you. I would ask that the board also close in honor of the people on this list, and I'd like to call out a couple of them. One is a gentleman named Tony Curry, who at the age of forty-six died and passed away from an accident. And he was a very well-known member of our community in Oak Park. He spent a lot of hours volunteering for Red Oaks Elementary, Medea Creek Middle School, and Oak Park High School, as well as his wife, Yvette. And he will be missed. His sons Trevor and Michael and many friends will all miss him dearly. I also wanted to point out another individual in our community, Fred Radke. And he was a lieutenant colonel in the Air Force, but he was also the engineer who developed the freeway from Calabasas through Thousand Oaks, the 101 freeway. And he has a scholarship in his name at USC where he graduated. And I also want to close in honor of Senator Ed Davis and our former L.A. police chief. I also wanted to point out we had a wonderful Earth Day celebration out in Thousand Oaks. A few thousand people attended, and it was, it's always really nice to see young people. And Newbury Pike High School has an ecology club that was there, and seen a lot of people learning about what they can do for the environment. And also looking at Crimes Victims Rights Week, which we're in right now, we had a horrible incident out in Oak Park where a wife was beat. And I just wanted to note how important it is. Two different neighbors made phone calls to report it, and how important that is because there are some communities out there where, you know, they won't, people just hear, you know, if you're in, you know, central Los Angeles, something you may hear screaming and not do something. And it's just how important it is to make that phone call, for people to get involved when they see something that doesn't look right. And I'm thankful, and I'm sure this woman's very thankful too, that someone did make those calls. Okay, with that then, we can move on to the rest of our agenda. I think right now we're at our time for our regular agenda items. The first one that we have on our list is our healthcare agency. I'm Ms. Schellman. This is regarding a grant, a really good grant from Mental Health and Drug. Is that right?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Park Supervisor, Mr. Johnson. The Behavioral Health Department would like approval and ratification for a grant that we submitted. It was due April the 6th, so we apologize for not getting here before that, but typical with grants, there's not enough time to do that. This is an exciting grant opportunity for us to serve two-hundred-and-fifty homeless in the Oxnard area who suffer from co-occurring disorder of mental illness and substance abuse. And I can answer any questions, but we're looking forward to receiving this grant. It's four-hundred thousand dollars for five years.
I'm just surprised to see, in the report it says that we are the only agency that's providing this kind of, through this grant process of both attacking both problems at once.
The part that we referenced for the only is the, as your board is aware, we are one of, I think it's five counties in the state of California that are doing the Sansa Integrated Dual Diagnosis Treatment Grant, which is being run by the State Department of Mental Health. It's a training grant, and we are the only county in the state that has moved from training to implementation and is actually now implementing the best practice dual diagnosis treatment currently in two of our clinics, and we're in training at a third of our clinics. So the state is incredibly proud of how far we've moved. We think that that certainly will make us very competitive for this grant as well since it's a Sansa best practice that we're actually the first implementers of.
You realize how important it is to end homelessness, that you have to attack it from a lot of different angles, and this is certainly one of the most prominent angles to attack from. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. This is really a needed program. So I really appreciate the movement forward and our leadership in trying to move faster than others in the state. So I wish you a lot of luck. I also like to use this as an opportunity to point out that we are woefully inadequate overall in terms of detox services in this county. And if you're mentally ill, you can get some detox services through mental health, but if you're not, we don't have, you know, we don't have anything. And so it is an issue that I think we have to address, and it's one that I'll be certainly talking with the CEO about, you know, and overall, Human Services Agency, because, you know, if you, I mean, if you want people, if people say, "I am willing to get off," and we don't have any way for them to do that, so it is an important issue. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Seeing no objections, that passes. I just heard statistics on the radio that in downtown L.A., they've got ninety thousand homeless people.
I'm thankful we don't have that.
Yes. Our next item then is item number twenty-eight, and this is our Elections Division regarding the appointment in lieu of election.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Philip Schmidt, county clerk and recorder. I stand before you this morning to ask that you appoint in lieu of election the committee members that are on the list. We have two races coming up, three races, excuse me. Two in the Republican Central Committee and one in the Democratic Central Committee. We did publish on February 8th in the Ventura Star the openings, and the nomination period went from February 10th to March 17th, I believe. We asked you to appoint in lieu of election those members.
Thank you. And this is, I would imagine this is a pretty much a requirement of the state.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And do we have a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you very much. Seeing no objection, that passes.
Thank you. I'd also like to make one comment about the election system. I want everyone to know that we are doing voter outreach with our new election equipment, sometimes two and three different places per day. And if anyone is interested in where we will be setting up over the next few days or the next month, please call the Elections Division. We have a calendar of all the places. Tonight, we will be at the Piru Library, so we're expecting a big crowd.
Okay.
You'll be surprised.
I hope so.
And I appreciate, I saw a press release out in the newspaper that you're going to be out in Thousand Oaks, and it's good to get out there and people have an opportunity to see how simple it is, from what I hear.
Absolutely. We're going to be in Thousand Oaks a couple different times. And also, this coming Thursday, we will be at the Bagel Cafe on Main Street along with KBTA Radio. They are going to be broadcasting from that location, and they have graciously allowed us to set up our equipment there for people to stop by.
Good outreach.
Do you, any feedback from the people in San Pola who just recently used the new system?
No, they did not use our new system. That election was actually contracted out to Martin and Chapman. They were the ones that conducted it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that motion passed. We have item twenty-nine now, and this is regarding our trans. And good morning, Mr. Dursey.
Good morning, board members. Paul Dursey, County Executive Office. I'm up here to ask your approval to let us borrow up to one-hundred-and-sixty million dollars for next year's annual tax and revenue anticipation note for trans. It's our annual cash flow borrowing to fill the void of cash flow deficit between, basically the first six months of next fiscal year. Anticipated costs are not expected not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, which include our bond counsel, our underwriters, and our rating agencies and other miscellaneous expenses. And this item has been reviewed and approved by the Financial Planning Committee. So if there's any questions, I hope I can answer them for you.
I would just note that it could seem rather alarming when you first hear about such a thing, but this is just basically to keep us on an even keel between property tax and it's all covered in that sense.
That's correct. And it's a, it's a one, basically a one-year borrowing. We pay it back at the following June. Correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's also something we've been doing since 1979, and we continue to have the highest rates on it that the county our size can possibly capture, so we do a good job with it.
We've been fairly successful in both, even during our bad years, we still got the highest rating as far as the short-term issuance. And we've done generally pretty well relative to other counties as far as borrowing costs and rates.
Standard operating procedures.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection, that passes.
Thank you.
And then I have item thirty, and this is the District Attorney's Office item regarding a grant funds.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. This is a request of your board to adopt a resolution so that we can submit a new application for our workers' compensation fraud program. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion? We have a motion.
Thank you.
And a second.
And a second.
Thank you very much.
And that passes. Thank you very much. The last, no, it isn't our. Our next item is item thirty-one. This is a request for a letter to be sent, oh, this, okay. This is a request of, actually, my request, that we send a letter to areas in the unincorporated county that will be potentially affected by a FEMA map revision regarding flooding. And as a result, their insurance could go up. So what this is doing is providing notification to those residents that that may happen, and if you purchase your insurance before that map is finalized, you may end up with lower rates as a result. So this is, I think, a benefit to the community, something I think some of the cities has done. There's a copy, an example of the letter in our packet, and would ask that the board support this and move its, move its recommendation.
Second. Second, second.
Thank you.
And just if I might comment, thank you for bringing this forward for the unincorporated areas. The city of Camero, I've been involved with their review of the maps and the issues related to it, and the city has formally appealed the map revisions to FEMA. And I know our Watership Protection District is working with the city on that also. So I also would think that our Watership Protection District will be looking at these areas of these property owners to see if, in fact, we're in concurrence with the maps in that area, or should we, as a county, be also appealing to FEMA for revisions on those maps.
And maybe that period has expired. I was thinking maybe even the city of Moore Park also has joined in on that. But, yes, certainly to follow that closely.
Right. And they're probably properties that are all adjacent to the cities that are appealing at this point, I would think, so.
Yes, and I know it does have some impact in Santa Rosa Valley, too. The Santa Rosa Mac was very interested in seeing that this letter go out. So thank you for your seconds, and seeing no objection, that passes. Move on now to item thirty-two. This is also one that I brought forward, and this is asking that we appoint Captain Cliff Williams with the California Highway Patrol to be on our Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Seeing no objection, that motion also passes. We'll go on to item thirty-three now. This is Mr. Remington on our Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. Good morning, Mr. Remington.
Good morning. Madam Chair, some members of the board, and Mr. Johnston. Today, I'm asking that the board approve the JJCPA plan for '06-'07. This would be the sixth year that the plan has been approved from the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. Justice Coordinating Council. We first began the JJCPA programs in 2001, 2002. We had about $2.8 million at that time, and, and over time, that money has shrunk. We have been able to continue to fund the programs that were identified early on in the process as gaps in services for Ventura County. So, when you look at the, at the proposal, you'll see that we continue to fund everything from truancy. That's a program that's run by the DA's office. We, from probation, we focus on early intervention. And, and then with our ROPP program, the Repeat offender Program, we identify young people at the first petition who are likely to become, research would say likely to become serious habitual delinquents if we don't provide a lot of services at that time. We also supplement that with a day reporting center. In our institutions, this program pays for our Girls Inc. program, which is a satellite program of that nonprofit organization that has worked very, very successfully in our gender program, unique gender programs for females in our institutions. And it includes a gang violence suppression program that we partner with San Pola PD. So, all those programs have, have been involved since we began. They're programs that research has shown are proven programs or promising programs. So, we think that the programs provided by the Juvenile Justice Coordinated, or proposed by the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council and funded by the Juvenile Crime Prevention Act have in fact been successful in this county and will continue to be successful. Our challenge this year was again absorbing some of the, our costs continue to go up, the money is, has gone down. So, that's been a little bit of a difficult program, problem for us, but we have been able to, to fund all the programs. I'm happy to say all the programs this year if your board approves our plan.
Sounds like a good plan. Do I have a motion?
Move the recommended action?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you for the report, and that motion passes.
If I might just thank the team, the Coordinating Council, there, we had a little bumps on this one, but we worked through it and, and we worked through it because the, when you have the experience with some of these programs and the partners we have, the schools in particular, they, they saw the value in the program, they were feeling a little pinch about the shift of cost, but they certainly understood that as, as the monies are cut by the, by the federal program, then all, all boats have to rise with the tide or fall with the tide. So, it was a little, little hard time there, but we got through it and I thank Cal for the leadership on it and the team.
Thank you, yes. We did get through it and, so I'd like to also thank all the JJC members. Terry Warnock and Pat Oliveris worked very, very hard on this from probation staff.
Absolutely.
And, yes, we were able to get through it another year. We're hoping that the legislature may add additional money to this, but, but our optimism isn't real high, but we're hoping because again, as time goes on, the money buys less as far as programming. So, again, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Board Members.
That passes unanimously also. Our next item then is with our Sheriff's Department. Let's see if I skipped one, too. Yes, I did. This is regarding item 34 in our alien assistance program, criminal alien assistance program.
Madam Chair, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, I'm Kathy Kemp, Detention Services Chief Tappety. This is an annual federal grant that we apply for every year to assist with some of the costs of housing criminal aliens in, within our jails within the county. And this particular timeframe will be from July of 2004 until the end of June of 2005. We're always approximately one year to have full statistics, and we will be applying for that with your approval. And I'm open for any questions you might have.
I'm glad that we are reimbursed to some extent, but not fully.
Yeah.
Do we have an idea about what percentage of our population in the jails are?
About, the bookings that we have on an annual basis, about six and a half, about six and a half percent of them are criminal aliens that come in. On an average day, about 100 of our 1,700 population are illegal criminal aliens.
And is this, that was my next question, is it specific to illegal aliens in the criminal system?
Yes, it's specific to illegal aliens.
Thank you.
Criminal aliens.
Mr. Bennett?
This is reimbursement for the past service that we've done.
Correct.
Recently, we heard that the Bush administration is thinking of cutting this program?
Yes.
And so, we will be absorbing in next, so just out of the blue, suddenly we'll have to absorb how much?
There's a considerable, the last distribution that we received this year for '03, '04 was 564,000 in round numbers. It varies different years depending on the amount of money that Congress puts into the grant funding. I know there's a great deal of political pressure being placed on the administration regarding that. I know that the sheriff has shared that both the California State Sheriff's Association and the National State Sheriff, National Sheriff's Association have also taken a lot of action and tried to state the importance of keeping that the way it is.
Yeah, I just, I just would point out this is consistent with what Mr. Johnson pointed out with our budget last week, which was, was as things improve in one area, we, we're going to get hit so much more in the federal area with the Medicare cutbacks, you know, the $40 billion hit from the federal government that we, we constantly are having to absorb someplace else. And this would just be, this is one that was not on the radar screen last week when we had that conversation and has, and has come up just even in this last week. So, we have to be ready. It's always going to be a challenge, specifically. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move the recommended action.
Motion and a second. Thank you for the report, Ms. Kemp. Okay. Our next item then is also with the Sheriff's Department. This is regarding suppression of cannabis eradication.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, good morning. I'm David Tennyson, Commander with Special Services Division of the Sheriff's Department. I'm here on behalf of the sheriff to once again seek your authorization to enter into an agreement with the Drug Enforcement Administration to cooperatively work at eradicating and suppressing illegal marijuana grows in Ventura County. Over the last two years, the Sheriff's Narcotics Unit has seized and destroyed over 20,000 marijuana plants worth several millions of dollars, mostly in grows located in the back country of Ventura County. In addition, we've seized, we have seized an ever-increasing amount of weapons that the growers are using to protect their obviously lucrative illicit businesses, which is a growing concern. This agreement will result in funding from the U.S. Department of Justice and the amount of about $18,000 to offset some of our costs in this matter.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Motion and a second. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Our next item is item 36. This is regarding the Cano Valley Unified School District and their trans.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members, and Mr. Johnson.
Good morning.
This is a $20 million tran for the Cano School District. The county is just, through the Treasury, is participating to facilitate the transaction. There are no county assets that are involved in this, so we ask for your approval as a matter of technically going forward.
We have a motion?
Second, with a quick question. Do they, do they coordinate their transaction, their trans efforts with our $160 million? Is there, is that legal if they wanted to?
I don't think it would be.
Okay, thank you. There'd be some interesting economies of scale if we could, everybody would save some administrative costs.
I guess they could coordinate mechanically, but not the, not the actual amount.
Right. They're going in a different direction. They're putting theirs out for a, a competitive bid rather than a negotiated tran, which I believe is what the plan is for ours this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We have a 9:30 item I'm going to go to right now, and that is a resolution proclaiming Safety Seat Checkup Week. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, we'll have some recognition here. I know when we were doing our general plan update, I saw something in there about school safety, bus safety, and looking at the idea of, you know, getting seat belts on buses, but as I understand them, we're already, state's already moving forward towards that, so that's good to know. This resolution states that the number one preventable cause of death and injury of children and young adults are automobile collisions. 160 child passengers under the age of 16 were killed, and 17,754 were injured in automobile collisions just in the state of California alone in 2004. This is, up to 71% of these children would be alive today if they had been properly restrained in crash-tested safety seats, boosters, or safety belts, completely avoidable accidents. Whereas infants and young children are not capable of initiating actions to use proper restraints and are not protected adequately by automatic belts or airbags, and only about 60% of children in this age group are protected by restraint, use it on every ride. And whereas crash-tested safety seats are moderately priced and widely available for purchase at retail stores and at low cost from car safety seat distribution programs throughout California, and whereas the state of California has ruled that until children are six years of age or 60 pounds, they must be restrained in safety seats or boosters in backseat when riding in motor vehicles, and that all other occupants must be properly restrained in safety seats or safety belts. And whereas Safety Belt Safe USA has been dedicated for 26 years protecting children from injury or death while being transported in a motor vehicle, it says the board does hereby resolve that Ventura County proclaims April 23rd through 29th, 2006, as Safety Seat Checkup Week in the county of Ventura. And I'll bring this down, and if you would like to give us some words of wisdom on this, it'd be appreciated.
Thank you. My name is Ross Cole. I'm the Community Education Officer for the Ventura County Fire Department and here to accept this proclamation on behalf of Safety Belt Safe. Along with me today are Self Asoceto from the Public Health Department, which is the lead agency for Ventura County Safe Kids, and she's our coordinator, and Andrea Swanson, who is our lead instructor in child passenger safety for the county. And currently, we use the Safety Belt Safe materials, their dedication, their experience in promoting child safety and in doing our child passenger safety seat inspections and the special checkup events within the county. Currently, the fire district has the only child passenger fitting station that is operated on a weekly basis, so we do this on Wednesdays by appointment only, where we inspect, educate the parents of their cars, make sure their car seats are installed correctly. And we can't do that without the support of the Safety Belt Safe, the Ventura County Safe Kids Coalition, and Andrea's expertise and advocacy in child passenger safety. So, it's a very much a collaborative effort on everybody's part to make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. It'd be a great place for mommy and niece to come visit, you know, those classes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does that pass the resolution? Thank you for your work. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. We do have a few seconds left for Mr. Williams, who has put in a card on this item.
You know, I never pass up a few seconds. You know, you can say a lot in a few seconds if you've done your homework. And we're willing to spend the time to come down here and talk to government, government that we're supposed to say lies. How many of you seen those videos of those babies killed in the front seat and car seats? How many of you seen those videos? You said this been going on for 26 years. That literally made me sick at my stomach of the very thing that's supposed to save the child was killing the child, and the airbags was inflating when they shouldn't have been.
Your time is up, and you've actually got four seconds, five seconds over.
Five seconds over?
Yes.
Is that kind of life alone? I, I, I.
I'm hoping you're keeping you on even par with Mr. Egbert, who also went five seconds over.
Are you giving him?
So, thank you.
Well, I want to be equal with the sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your comments this morning. See you next week. Our next item is item 24, and this is also a 9:30 time certain. It's a recognition of volunteers who participate in the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program known as VIDA. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. My name's Lori Flack. I'm with the Human Services Agency. First, we want to thank you, the board, for supporting our financial empowerment initiative in 2003. In the past three years, under the coordination of Center Manager Miguel Orozco, who's here today, we've returned $1 million to the local economy largely through tax returns to public assistance clients. So, it's been a very successful project. Today, we're asking you to acknowledge a new partner in our third year, which is United Way, who has joined us, and they have brought many very able volunteers to this initiative this year. And Susan England is here today from United Way to talk a little more about their involvement, so I'll introduce her. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. England.
Good morning. Thank you, members of the board, supervisors. Actually, I'm here on behalf of the financial, Ventura County Financial Empowerment Partnership. I would like to actually acknowledge all those members. In addition to HSA and United Way, it includes El Concilio de Condado de Ventura, Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, CAUZ, the city of Port Huaynimi, the Area Housing Authority of the county of Ventura, and the Housing Authority of the city of Ventura, California Lutheran University, and the IRS. National Volunteer Week, April 23rd through 29th, is a time to thank volunteers of Ventura County who give of their time and talents to improve our community. Today, we are here, of course, to acknowledge the volunteers of the VIDA program who are providing income tax assistance. And I would just like to call your attention, maybe ask them to stand up or wave their hands. We have a number here in the, in the audience. Actually, I have. Their individual responsibilities as site organizers, interpreters, and tax preparers have provided the following assistance to our community. And right now, we're distributing some results of this year's program. Over 371 returns have been accepted by the IRS as of last week, and this represents approximately a half million dollars in refunds that have been returned to our community, which includes also $325,000 in the earned income tax credit. The earned income tax credit, as Lori mentioned, is one of the most successful or powerful federal aid programs for the working poor. I'd also like to acknowledge how we did this accomplishment this year. Taxes were prepared at five of our Job and Career Center sites, as well as at El Concilio and California Lutheran University. And as was mentioned, in each of the past three years, there's been a tremendous increase. We've grown 60% in the number of returns prepared and the number of dollars returned to the community. Tremendous growth for this program. And as you see in the last point there, over $1 million in federal tax return over the history of this program. Just to show you a breakdown of how the dollars play out, in addition to the earned income tax credit dollars, an additional almost $90,000 in child tax credit, another $12,000 in education credit, and with $116,000 in state refunds, brings us to our total of half a million dollars. Moving forward, we're excited about this year's results. We're looking forward to our future work. We thank you and ask for your continued endorsement of the program through the VIDA centers at the Job and Career, VIDA sites at the Job and Career Centers. We'll invite the county of Ventura to form a team of volunteers to join our effort, and we thank you for your continued support of the Financial Empowerment Partnership.
And we really thank you for your, and the volunteers. It's so difficult for some people to do taxes normally, and for you to not only do your own voluntarily, doing others, too. Really appreciate that wonderful, wonderful service to the community. Thank you. Yes, Supervisor Bennett?
I'd just like to point out to the volunteers, I had the pleasure all through my college years, in the summer, I worked for the Internal Revenue Service of the state of Indiana. And far and away, the people that were getting ripped off on the taxes were the, were the low-income people that paid oftentimes three, four times as many taxes they were supposed to because they didn't know how to fill out the forms, and it was a constant battle. And it was a constant battle, quite frankly, with the administration to treat those people fairly and actually point out that they filed their taxes wrong. So, it's just invaluable for people that are struggling with all kinds of other things, what the service you provide them is invaluable, particularly the earned income tax credit. I mean, for them to be able to be getting these refunds, just think what kind of, you know. I mean, for them to be able to be getting these refunds, just think what kind of, you know, for those of us making better incomes, what percentage of our, you know, if we got that as a percentage of our income back, it would, you know, we would have a greater, we'd have a greater appreciation, but for them, it really is invaluable, so thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Again, thanks to the volunteers. When the board supported this during the challenges with CalWorks and looking at how to help our very lowest-income folks, the earned income tax credit, we saw that it wasn't being utilized, that we didn't see the community education piece of it, nor their engagement, so year by year, as we make progress with this, it has to make a big difference, particularly as we're now faced with significant challenges with federal cuts to programs. So your work is appreciated, and we thank you.
Specifically, David Ackerson, Jeanette Ayala, Sunny Buzzin, Rosanna Collins, Sylvia Duarte, Virginia Espinoza, Irene Fisher Clifton, Ernesto Gonzalez, Andrea Grail, Mark Hokendorf, Hori Kazari, Suzanne Kitchens, Robin Levin, Irma Lopez, Barbara Magnuson, Patrick, Patricia Mackey, Kim Fatnagian, Dennis O'Leary, Viviana O'Leary, Debbie Roman Martin, Iris Siegel, Patty Thomas, and John Tolian. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our last item, I guess that's a receiving file, so move, thank you. Seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you very much, everyone. And our last item, then, is item thirty-seven, which is our correspondence agenda.
No, we have a report of investments at 9:30.
Oh, I apologize. We do have another 9:10. Thank you. We had just about finished there. Thank you very much, your report on our investments. Thank you.
Chairman Parks, honorable members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Bob Hanson, Chief Investment Officer for the county. Well, 15 straight times, the Fed has raised rates, and that's good news for us because our portfolio continues to creep up, and, of course, earnings creep up. The market says there's 100% chance of an increase to 5% on May 10th, so that will be an additional quarter of a point. And as far as the next Fed meeting, June 28th, there's a 42% chance now, but they'll focus more on that as we see the numbers and get closer to that date. As you noticed, the portfolio extended itself 39 days in maturity, out to 320 days, and I've been taking advantage of the higher rates in the two-and-three-quarter to three-year range, locking in four-and-three-quarters to five-and-one-eighth, which I think will look really good when they're done raising rates. And as far as the June meeting, it's hard right now to tell, because one day, I will read that inflation is going to hurt the economy, and the next day, I read where, I mean, gas prices going up would hurt the economy, and the next day, I hear inflation is a problem, so there's really mixed signals now. We need more of the economic numbers to come out.
Do we have any comments? I appreciate the conservative investments, too, because when you do have, you know, questions out there about what the market's going to do, it's nice to know that you're well protected.
And rate is our third criteria after credit and marketability.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to receive a file?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, second, if I can, you will. And that passes unanimously, and now we'll move on to our last item, which is the correspondence agenda. We have a motion and a second. No objection, that passes, and now we're going to close session. Do you anticipate an announcement?
No, there should be no announcement.
Okay, and then we'll adjourn straight from our closed session. Thank you very much.